America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please. This time the Chair will entertain a motion to waive reading approved in minutes of November the 2nd, 2017 by the Senate Council and the House. During discussion, during an honor favor Singapore say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by a nay. Aye has had it. Item four on our agenda, um, presentations. We have the certification of the 2017 general election results, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. The results of the general election as posted by the Director of Garland County Board of Elections and Registration is for District One, Atlanta Graham, eight thirty-six votes, Trent Gammish, forty-six votes, Karen Gervais, twenty-six votes. With no clear winner in that district, there'll be a runoff November twenty-first between Ms. Graham and Mr. Gammish. So everyone who can vote in District One, please remember we will have a runoff election on the twenty-first of November. You have to vote. Um, District Three, votes cast were Theresa Mack, one hundred and thirty-seven votes, Trevor McDonald, ninety-nine votes. So Theresa Mack has been reelected to serve another four years. Council District Five, no votes were cast for Bob Braddock, he was running unopposed.
Whoa.
In the way the law currently reads, if we have someone running unopposed, we don't have to hold them election in that district. That law will change in twenty eighteen, but for this year, it's, it's, um, still the law. So no votes were cast because none were needed. He ran unopposed, so Bob Braddock has been reelected to City Council. And then the mayor is elected at large, no votes were cast for him because he ran unopposed. And so there was no, um, precincts open for Mayor Oriol Rice. So, um, District One is undetermined, there'll be a runoff on November twenty-one. District Three, Theresa Mack is the winner and will serve in council for another four years. District Five, Bob Braddock is the one and will serve another four years. And the mayor at large, Mel Pennington, has won and will serve us for another four years. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just to clarify, Councilman Braddock, even though the clerk has certified the elections until Mrs. Braddock says that you're capable and able to serve, which will come after a few negotiations.
Here is Dela.
Dela. He's a very bad shape. Okay, um, we're gonna move into the, uh, actually, um, if I may, can I, can I amend the order of the presentation? Because I promised Bootsy that he would get to his Woodman meeting, so, um, I kind of was really important with Bootsy. Um, Bootsy, do you have anyone who's here with you this evening?
Absolutely.
Can you bring your teacup? So, turn to your face. So, um, November is also National Hospice and College of Care Month, and we appreciate the job that y'all collectively do, as well as other hospice, uh, groups in our area, because it is, um, so important to this community to have that level of care. And so we want to recognize and thank you all for the service that you give to this community and for you ladies for putting up with, with arguing with Bootsy. And so we have prepared for you a proclamation which, um, I'll present to each of you. And if y'all will smile, the nice lady behind me will take a picture of you and your proclamation.
Thank you very much, sir.
I hope you make your meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's go. Okay, thank you all. So we'll move into the swearing in of newly elected officials.
I'm asking if Phil Brown can come up and start a Bible from his neck.
We're not sure Bob's gonna make it yet, so.
Okay, I ask you to put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. All right, I just solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state.
I'm duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
Exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
Constitution of this state and of the United States.
So help me God. And as council member of the municipality of Hartsfield.
And as council member of the municipality of Hartsfield.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve peace.
To preserve peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yes? Give you the picture.
It's, um, the picture.
Okay.
Y'all wanna get here, come get in the middle and, uh, for the city's hill.
Braddock?
Right, come on.
All right, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And as council member of the municipality of Hartsfield.
And as a council member of the municipality of Hartsfield.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust proposed.
Exercise the trust proposed.
In me and I will use.
In me and I will use.
My best endeavors to preserve.
My best endeavors to preserve.
The peace and carry into effect.
The peace and carry into effect.
According to the law for the purposes.
According to the law for the purposes.
For which I've been elected.
For which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As mayor of the municipality of Hartsfield.
As mayor of the municipality of Hartsfield.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve peace.
Preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We'll get a picture, I think we're trying on a holdup. All these nice people there. I'll get a picture right after I finish exercising for the next sixteen weeks. Very Martin. So, um, is there anyone else here? Ms. Adley. Good luck with your, your runoff.
Thank you.
Trey. Nice to see you here and good luck as well to you.
Thanks, sir.
I guess next on our agenda is the recognition of new hires and promotions. Nobody here tonight? Okay. Uh, item D on our agenda is the Garland County Community Action Agency presentation. Oh, we need another chair. Oh, thank you, Lawrence. We're gonna make you earn that four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I shouldn't have said that in front of Martin, Martin's like, what? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Slaton, I'm the Executive Director for Garland County Community Action Agency. I thank you so much, and we, this is my Head Start Director, Ellen Patterson.
Good evening, sir.
We thank you for the opportunity to come before this evening to make an appeal to you uh, to give to our agency, to trust to our agency, the Lincoln Village Facility, the land of the wrong eight avenues surrounded by Marion and, um, Lincoln and on Eight Street to accommodate a new facility for our agency. We have provided for you in the red folder, a presentation packet. I will promise not to go through everything that's in the packet, but we did want you to have some information about our organization. We were formed more than fifty years ago by this, the General Assembly of South Carolina and have carried on our programs over the course of more than fifty years. We are centrally located here, our main office is located on Ford Street, and we have two locations of our Head Start program, which is our largest program, located here in Hartsfield. One at the Washington Street, St. Joseph's Diocese Catholic School, we've been there for more than fifty years. And we are also located, um, have a facility, um, at the Butler Heritage Facility and have been there for, how long has it been now? More than, who said, more than, yeah, about four to five years, I was going to say. I am purely new to the agency, I'm just new to the agency, a little more than a year and a half. So if I stumble with it, my able right hand here is going to help me to get through it. But the appeal tonight is just basically that we are in this, in a situation where our agency is being required to move out of the St. Joseph's Facility. The Diocese has notified us that they wish to evict us, even though they have allowed us to live at their facility for more than fifty years throughout our Head Start program. And they have given us until the end of this full year, which is May of next year, and we expect to request an extension of that time in order for us to build a new facility. And the reason that we would seek to build a facility is because we have, over the course of past fifty years, been located in various facilities that do not belong to our organization. And we have spent lots of money, more than probably five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars, enriching someone else's facility. And as a result of that, now, we have nothing to show for it except the fact that we are in existence and we run a very strong program. Over the past fifty years, more than fourteen thousand children have come through the Head Start program. We just recently celebrated a fifty-year anniversary just a little more than a week ago. And we were very fortunate to have had strong leadership over those years. We have great success stories from many of the children who have come through and who are now adults. And our goal is to have a facility that is our own, that once we invest in it, it will stand forever, because we expect that this program, which is federally funded, will exist for, forever, as long as the government exists, who will have low-income children and families who will need these services. We also will locate our other programs in that facility, and those programs, there is a listing of our programs, and I should mention too, that our budget annually is more than four million dollars through the programs that we administer. We serve of now three hundred Head Start children, and we serve more than seventeen hundred citizens of Garland County with the services that we provide. Um, the listing of our programs is on the slide that is, that is page four for you. Mine, I don't know where I have the big version, you guys have the little version. But because our budget is large and we provide all these services, we would like to have something that is permanent. Now, um, one of the questions that might, you might have about this is, why don't we try to locate, find another location? Um, one of the questions that has come up is why not seek to have the Washington Street school when it closes? I was able to get some information about that, the school district expects, this, the school district expects that that facility will be available in two years. But if we wait for two years, then we would have to start with our entire process from that point. And we would like to be in the facility within the next two years. The basis for our request is simple. We are good tenants, we are, we would bring pride to the community, that is Eight Street. We would have a facility that costs more than three million dollars, we are required to maintain that property, and we have regular inspections to ensure that we do. Our governing body, the Policy Council, which also governs heads, a portion of Head Start and all of the hiring for Head Start, we monitor in addition to the funding agencies coming out to monitor our facilities. We would continue to provide excellent services to the children and families of Garland County. And most of our children, actually, we have the two facilities now, we house approximately two hundred children in the two facilities located in Hartsfield alone. So two-thirds of our program is located right here in Hartsfield. Our central office is located here, our physical operation, I am located in Hartsfield, even though we have one other location in, in Garland County that's outside the city of Garland. So I'm going to stop there, Mr. Mayor, and ask if there are any questions or if there's any additional information that you all seek to have, we'd be happy to provide it to you.
Um, if you did build a new facility either on that or take three or somewhere else, um, has the funding been appropriated for that, or do we have to sneak that?
We would actually seek the funding, but the method of repayment is secured because it would be paid out of grant funds that we would receive from the agency. The funding that we would seek to you would be through local banks and I, we've had some communications with them. And also with USDA through their work housing program in community facilities. Um, we would surely be approved to obtain the funding to proceed. And the repayment, as I said, because our grant funds are secured, we will repay it with grant funds. We would have to make some adjustments in enrollment, excuse me, but we would have the funds to service the debt and maintain the property.
And would your facility be able to handle the same number of children, or would it be a bigger facility?
Well, we expected the, the facility need, based on the preliminary information from the architect that we're working with, that we would need a facility of approximately twenty thousand square feet, which is a very large facility, we would be able to house the two hundred children. Um, and even though there will probably be some adjustments in our Head Start enrollment, we would provide services to other children, um, to four K children through another program on the first steps through the state. And so we would be able to service the same number of children through one program or another, that is our expectation.
There are several guidelines that dictate square footage based on occupancy and children even down to the playgrounds.
That is correct.
At seventy-five.
Seventy-five square feet on the playgrounds on the outside and thirty-five square feet on the inside and classrooms.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And this is not the agenda to look for tonight, this is just for information only. I will say that we've already asked the State Commission if this would be an acceptable use, and we did say that it was an acceptable use of the property. And if they didn't develop within a certain period of time, it would have a revert back to the city.
One of the things that was taken into consideration was a federal criteria for that low-income capacity.
And, and just for the benefit of the council, not that this may come in fruition, but we also talked about the potential for co-locating, other sister agencies that share some of the same client space and see if we couldn't find space to house some of those organizations as well. Right now, like the, for instance, the dividend and, um,
Dad, the dad pay.
I mean, the dad pay then, um, and y'all share similar space because it's similar families and there's some crossover there and it seems to work very well for both groups.
Thanks, Mark.
The only thing that we didn't mention was the clause for you to, um, sell your house in Society Hill and move into this. So if anyone would like some farming in Society Hill, that's two beautiful ponds. She's looking to, to move to Hartsfield. No? I'm trying to convince her that that's what you call a summer home. You're summer in Society Hill, you. Yeah, that's right. Thank you so much for your coming. Anything from the City Manager, Manager's update?
Sharon's on the email, has told you where you need to be and when, so please check your email so we can know.
Yeah, that thing is, um, great, thank you. I hope you haven't been sending it for like a year because.
She hasn't. It's very old.
Yeah, that's very old.
That's it.
Okay, items, uh, for the consent agenda will be received as information about the expanded proof. Uh, moving into unfinished business, item six on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three twelve, Mayor's approval.
The ordinance of the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina, under the restating adding provisions to Chapter eighty-two, Article two, Division one of the Code of Ordinances governing the city's water and sewer system.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title of presentation, City Manager. This time the Chair will move to open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-one thirty-two, if you rise, state your name and address, please come to the front. Limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the Chair will close the public hearing. Uh, attend any motions for approval of final reading. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass ordinance forty-three twelve. Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on ordinance forty-three twelve?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'm reading in my last meeting, proposal bonds payable from combined system, meaning that the water rate and water park rates must be raised to cover debt service costs, it means regardless of the success of the water park. So when we're gonna have that rate study?
Ooh, I had it called today. We had it set, we're all in. So these plans come the second week in December, and, um, we're talking about a different place, kind of a water rate study one-on-one possibility for City Council and all having y'all, but what we even get to step in for any of the board council. But just had the call today, we've gotten a slowdown on it. Um, really I want to have this prepared too, as we lead into the budget season. Um, so looking at the first week or second week in December, it probably will come down and we'll begin those calls. So we have already been looking for it. And the great part too is that since we already did so much work for the water park feasibility study, we already have half of the work done on the winter month, so it shouldn't take as long as starting the water rate study.
Do you have any idea?
That's what the whole water rate study.
Oh, right.
So we've had some discussion on that, and on the back of that, we've been very diligent to not raise rates for five years. Is that right?
Um, we actually had a commercial, a commercial increase.
Residential rate.
They were looking at possibly getting to about three percent. Um, and we're here for several years to get us where we need to be, but that doesn't necessarily mean your bill goes up three percent. It could be commercial customers go up a little bit more. We'll have to figure all that out, and we'll have a lot of scenarios to deal with that.
More free on the bed.
He's coming in December with staff that are already for council in December.
Anything further?
That's just one of the names.
Sure.
But this ordinance doesn't relate to any.
Correct. If there's nothing further, all in favor Singapore say aye. Aye opposed by a nay. Ordinance forty-three twelve passes. Um, item seven on our agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three thirteen, if you have any published order.
To lease the property at two twenty-nine West Carolina Avenue to Salvation Army.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title of presentation, the City Manager. This time the Chair will open the public hearing and entertain, oh gosh, my brain just shut down. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three thirteen, if you rise, state your name and address for record, come to the front. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion on forty-three thirteen?
It's fifteen years ago.
Correct, and it does have the proper outs and callbacks, so those questions will come. Anything further? Hearing that all in favor Singapore say aye. Aye opposed by a nay. Aye has had it. Moving into new business, I thought, you know, I thought I would take this opportunity to say that my dad just slipped out, didn't he? Did he slip out? So, Mom, I just want you to know that you're my favorite parent for today. Mom, you too. Can't believe he slipped out. All right. Guess he doesn't get to eat dinner. Item eight on the agenda, Resolution eleven dash seventeen dash oh-three, a resolution for approval of formally naming the newly renovated museum video venue and adopt a logo. Is there such a resolution, such a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Madam, would you like to come and present?
I would, I would. That is beautiful. We live in the new name of our building. In case you didn't notice, there are great things happening down at the corner, um, um, where are we? North, North History Museum. Um, what we're working on, the buildings, the two buildings, um, you may have noticed one that says Hartsfield Museum et cetera. We did that, um, work in twenty-ten, and what's in that building is the old quality hardware store, and it's storage and workspace for the museum that we needed desperately. So we've been using the building, and now we're working on the other section, which is the old Hartsfield Messenger side of the building, and it was older. And the two were joined together when it was quality. So after going around and asking and thinking about all the different names that we've. that we could name this building, um, one of the things that came up was Special Edition or whatever, but we hit on the Edition. And when I first heard it, I said, well, why didn't I think of that? Because it was so close. Because I've been calling it the Edition, or across the street, or et cetera, or whatever. But the Edition actually goes into that history of the building, which is the Messenger side. So you got that nice play, plus the E looks really nice, I think. Allingway designed this with the Edition. Um, the lanterns are part of, a big part of this logo. If you've noticed, out in front of the post office building where the main exhibits are, are for the museum, you see the view, um, two beautiful lanterns, and those are original to the building. They were put in in nineteen twenty-nine when the building was built. And then across the street now, at the Edition, we have a lantern out in the courtyard area of the building that picks off the two, so that was a tie between the two buildings. And I didn't manage to find my back in the drawing room. I wanted to share this and share with you.
Very nice.
And any questions? So if you have a comment that we have on Hartsville.
Very well done. Anything?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything further on a resolution? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed by aye. The resolution carries. Item nine on the agenda, the new business first reading of ordinance forty-three thirteen. The mayor will publish.
The ordinance ending restating certain provisions of chapter fifty-eight are reported code ordinances in the city of Hartsville, South Carolina to prevent the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public spaces within a defined area and other matters related thereto.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title of presentation, city manager. This time the chair will entertain any motions to adopt. Mr. Mayor, may I motion to pass ordinance forty-three fourteen? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on ordinance forty-three fourteen? Madam?
Mr. Mayor, if you were to bring this page down into the start of Butler District, or if that's what we that area, would you be able to, uh, change those guidelines to allow for that?
We allow for that under our special event permit, so it would be acceptable as long as the special event permit was approved.
This allows that to happen in the absence of... Anything further? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed by aye. The ayes have it. Item ten on the agenda, it's first reading of ordinance forty-three fifteen. The mayor will publish.
The ordinance authorizing the execution delivery of purchase and sale agreement with Duke Energy Progress, authorizing the execution and delivery of sewer use agreement with Duke Energy Progress, and other matters relating thereto.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title of presentation, city manager. The chair will entertain any motions to adopt. Mr. Mayor, may I motion to pass ordinance forty-three fifteen? Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that there is, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed by aye. Ordinance carries. I got everybody we need right here.
I say the power, not visitors.
Nothing to do with the... Maybe it's a little... Johnny, can you read that? Alright, um, first reading, first reading of ordinance forty-three sixteen. The mayor will publish.
And ordinance of the city council of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, authorizing and implementing an environmental remediation rate class for certain industrial users of the city's sewers and other matters related thereto.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title of presentation, city manager. This time the chair will entertain any motions to adopt. Mr. Mayor, may I motion to pass? 令四十三十六 Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed by aye. The ordinance carries first reading. Um, items for the, uh, calendar to be received without any objection based on the rules of the government. Uh, is there anything else? For the good of council or this body in particular? Councilman, did you want to go on record as to who your favorite mayor is between the two cities you represent, or you want to pass on that? It's Mayor Campbell on this one. Okay, if there's nothing further, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for your time this evening and for coming, and we will see you soon. This time, this chair.